We would like to call the meeting to order at this time. Let us please stand for the invocation and for the place of release. We give thanks upon this day for a beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for grace and mercy to be able to travel the path that you lead us. We welcome you to do this, this meeting, this day, to have your way. We ask you to give us vision, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. So to the maker of the heaven and the earth, we welcome you. And once again, we thank you for all that you are doing and all that you will do. Amen.
Amen. I pray that it is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we prepare to get into our agenda, I do want to welcome back Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore, who was out for a little while with illness. And so it's an honor to have you back, Councilwoman. You're welcome to go and greet everyone.
Oh, yes. First of all, Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
It's really good to see you here. It's good that you see me here because there was a rumor out that I was dead. It went to WPDE first that I'm dead. Okay, I tried to call and find out what's going on. Then they did a private number, so I didn't think anymore about it until the sheriff's office calls and said, "We heard that she was dead." She clears my call, heard the same thing, because he told me he did. So it's all out in the street. I asked them, "Where did they get that from? There's a rumor all out in the street that I'm dead." So if I'm dead, everybody in this audience must be dead also.
I live here in heaven.
We in heaven.
Yeah, I hope we all in heaven, but that was really, that really annoyed me because my husband was a long-distance truck driver. Had he been on the road, say, for instance, he was in Minnesota, and he got that phone call, "Your wife, I was so sorry to hear about your wife." You know what that would do to him? But if you can't say anything and you know about people, be quiet until you find out for sure. I don't understand why people talk so much in South Carolina, and they talk about things that they don't even know. So again, Happy New Year to you. But on the other end, my conversation next time won't be as nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And like I said, glad to have you among the land of the living. And thank you all, you know, for your dedication and the service, that you've always served the community well, and so we thank you. So at this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined. First, we have approval of minutes. The minutes are from December 13th, 2021 regular meeting.
Point of order, I have a question.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Can we have the attorney, Jim Peterson? I don't see him. Is he here?
He's by phone today.
He's by phone today. I've got a question.
Hello, Jim. Can you hear us? Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear it? I can hear you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I've got a question that I would like to just understand the process of recusing myself or any of us wanting to recuse ourselves.
Jim, did you hear the question?
Sounds like he's in his office, yes.
Jim?
Yes. No, I could hear the question. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. There seems to be a delay, Mayor. I apologize for that. The process, of course, of recusal when you have a conflict of interest is prescribed by the Code of Ethics. And it does require that there be a written document filed with the municipal clerk that states in writing the basis of the conflict of interest.
Okay. My question is because on last month, there was a recusal, and we don't know what the reasoning for it. And so if we don't know the reasoning, can we approve the minutes?
Of course, you could approve the minutes. But there is no requirement that you approve the minutes today. What I would suggest is that we take the steps necessary.
I can't hear.
...the basis of the conflict of interest in writing so that the record is straight.
Is it possible somebody can just call them on their phone?
So Jim, you're stating that simply you can approve the minutes, or either you can just request to have the explanation written out more?
You could approve the minutes on the condition that the explanation will be written out.
Yeah, can we switch? Can we switch it?
Or you could defer approval of the minutes until it has been written out.
Jim, I think Randy's gonna try to get you on his phone.
Mayor.
Jim, we're gonna call you back on a different phone. Hold on one second.
Mayor, I'll take my microphone away. It's hot. Oh, it is. I didn't see it before. Yeah.
Jim, put your phone. You're gonna have to listen to your phone. Not that you did, that's it. Wait for us, okay? All right. Can you hear now?
I can hear.
You put the mic on.
All right, Jim. Can you go through that again?
I can. I think there are two choices for going forward. Choice number one is the minutes could be approved on the condition that the written statement regarding conflict of interest is elaborated and completed separately, or that written correction could be done now and then it approved, or the approval of the minutes could be deferred until that is accomplished, until the written explanation is added. We should seek to have the written explanation as required by the Code of Ethics.
Okay. Okay, so I guess what we have before us is those two things. Do we want to move forward because we've got a recusal and we don't know what the reasoning for it was? So I guess we move forwards on those two.
What is the motion?
The motion is that we would defer the approval of meeting, the meeting minutes on the account that we need to, I guess, finish the business of the last meeting, of the recusal, and the proper documents be inputted properly.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. On several occasions, I, along with a couple other members, have recused themselves for reasons that's on the agenda, and that's what happened last month. But they're only recusing themselves because they don't feel, or when I recuse myself, it feels like I shouldn't be voting on it because it's a conflict of interest.
Well, we were voting.
Chair recognizes, you know, so.
Okay.
Because it's, because I've recused myself several times. When we talk about the Pecan Festival, because it's something we know we're gonna vote for it, those of us that's here that's involved with the festival, we know we're gonna vote yeah. So we recuse ourselves so it won't look like it's a setup. No one's ever made a big deal out of a recusal, because when you recuse yourself, you're only doing it because you don't think it's right, whatever's happening, you don't feel it's right at the time.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Well, we voted on $6 million over five years going into the community, and there was a recusal, and there was never a reason why there was a recusal. And so my question is, can I just say I don't want to vote on something just because I don't want to vote on it? You can't. Legally, you're not supposed to recuse yourself just because you don't want to vote on something. There needs to be a reason. And so as a new councilperson, I'm asking the question, how is it done? And when I need to recuse myself, I would need to know the proper way to do it. And so on last month, we voted to get the money, and the mayor recused herself, and we don't know why the recusal happened, and there's no documents on why she did. And so I'm asking the question for future reference on how do I move forward? Can I just recuse myself because I don't want to vote on it?
Okay, I'll recognize myself, Sister Mira. I did complete a document stating there was a conflict of interest, and I will gladly complete that form today. The conflict of interest is that the Community Service Committee appointed a committee of people to serve on the CDC. The members that was appointed did not come through for each of us councilmembers to appoint. One of the appointment was actually someone who worked with my campaign. So for me, it's a conflict of interest to have one of my campaign workers work on a committee that is positioned to receive money from the city and then potentially work on my campaign again. So for me, that is an ethical conflict for me. So that is why I recuse myself, and I would gladly put that, the form is there, and I will put that explanation on there. I said conflict of interest. Well, I would gladly put it there because campaign worker appointed, not through the mayor, but I would have to vote on that, and I'm not gonna vote for something that appears to not be ethical. So that is why I recuse myself, and I would do it again and again, because the ideal of the committee is one that the city's been working on for years, and it would have been one for, you know, people out of the community. But for me, that was too sharp of a conflict, and I don't want it to appear to be a, you know, pay-for-play type of thing. So that's why I recuse myself, and I gladly put that, you know, longer explanation on the form, which is in the packet already. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Moore.
Well, I think the question's been answered, but it's not sometimes, it's not sometimes a person doesn't want to vote on it. They just don't feel it's ethical to vote. Like, there's certain things that if we vote on, certain people are gonna vote, "Okay, okay, okay," every time something comes up. And it might be a point, not for our best interest. So you recuse yourself if you don't feel it's for your best interest, and you just say, "Why? I'm recusing myself because I don't think it's for my best interest to accept money from the council, knowing what's gonna happen with it." I don't know, but I wasn't here for December, but I just wanted to explain, my recusal was...
Wait, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to explain, when I recuse myself, it's because there's something on the agenda that I don't feel I should be voting on because it's a conflict of interest. Because there's certain things that I'm always gonna vote yes for, and it's gonna be a conflict of interest. There's something on the agenda today that I'm gonna vote yes on, so.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes. Ball, Councilwoman Barnes, proof, Jim Bailey.
I hear you, but the truth of the matter, these board members are not getting paid. That is not factual. These board members are actually, some of the board members, when you attempted to do a CDC before, were people that were on your campaign and worked on your campaign. So the reasoning still does not match up with what you're saying, because no board member for a CDC gets paid. No one gets paid. That is not true. So, or to say that there's a pay-for-play. And I guess that's what, can we just conjure up something to just say something? If we don't want to vote for it, just say no. Period. And, you know, because that's, we need to stand in our troops. Period. I'll leave that alone.
Chair recognizes Pro Tim DeBailey.
Thank you. I do think the form that is before us, we're required to put whatever the nature of it is. So if, for instance, as Councilwoman Moore said, if I serve on the Pecan Festival Committee and I feel like I can't, I have a conflict, I just need to say, "I serve on the Pecan Festival Committee." So the form does require that, but I do think you've given your explanation verbally. And so I don't know, the motion that's before us is to defer, but I don't know what more would be gained later. And so I guess I'm asking if there's anything else to be, any additional information that would be forthcoming later if we deferred, or if we've gotten the explanation that we've received, and if that's it. So I guess I'm asking Councilwoman Barnes what she would like to do.
Well, then I will ask Jim Peterson. Is it, can I defer myself because of the reasons that the mayor stated? Because there is someone on the CDC board that worked on her campaign? Is that a reason for recusal?
The way the Ethics Commission has always looked at conflicts of interest is they give great leeway to the council member to decide at what level they feel they are unable to vote on something in a manner that is not either a precise conflict of interest or has the appearance of a conflict of interest. And they give great credence to the councilperson's decision. It is, and I need to back up, because this question sort of came up during the conversation, during the discussion. South Carolina law does require all councilmembers to vote on every matter. In other words, our law does not allow a simple abstention from vote, simply to say, "I don't want to vote on this. I'm not voting." But it does allow a recusal when a councilperson feels that they have a conflict of interest that would prevent them from being completely upfront on their vote. So given that status, the explanation, had that explanation been written on the piece of paper that the law requires that we turn in, then I think that explanation would have certainly been sufficient to justify a recusal. It's simply a matter that it wasn't on the piece of paper.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim, for those comments. At this point, it just is stated, I will put in writing, for me, it's an ethical conflict because, yes, the board and one of the workers, that board will be receiving city funds. For me, that's a conflict of interest. And by law, I did talk to our city attorney prior to recusing myself. So I did see the information already. So that is why when we got here, and I had to do the form, filled it out, and I will go and add on there to the extended version, that I'm recusing myself because, for me, it's an ethical concern. And so I will put that on the form. If after you do what Casey, I'll do that today. That's no problem. That is my explanation, and I will remain and continue. And I do not want to vote on that committee, because for a CDC, as you may know, that if you develop that CDC right, you can end up having an executive director who can be a paid position, and your board won't be one. But they can also receive funds from the city. So regardless, it's my legal right to recuse myself ethically. I don't feel like I should do that. So for me, I will stand by my recusal, and I will complete that form in more detail. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
So I guess, what do you want to do with that motion?
So now I think that we can approve the minutes, approve on contingent on this, these proper documents be put in place.
And I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign. So next on our agenda, we will move into our appearance before the council. Presently have Ms. Mindy Taylor from Duke Energy to present a check to the city of Florence for Iola Jones Park. Call for Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Duke Energy, we believe we power the lives of our customers and the communities that we serve, and one of the best ways to do that is by investing in worthwhile projects. And several months ago, I was talking with Scotty Davis and Randy Osterman, and found out that there's a need for an outdoor picnic shelter at Iola Jones Park. And I think in today's environment, it's important that family and friends have an opportunity together in a safe place now more than ever, and what better way to do that in an outside setting. And so on behalf of Duke Energy, I want to present a check for $50,000 to help build that picnic shelter at Iola Jones Park. [applause]
Commander, Mayor. That was quick. Mindy, thank you again for all that you and Duke Energy do, not only for the city of Florence, but throughout our great country. Thank you once again, and on behalf, I do know that the community has been seeking a shelter for a long time, and I would always have to say, I know if Mrs. Betty Gregg would be here, she would be overjoyed to tell you thank you. She is a community champion. So thank you so much. And at this time, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Moore.
I just want to thank Mindy Taylor, not only for the picnic shelter, the funds for the picnic shelter, but for all that you do. I don't know about any other councilmembers, but I've called you on several occasions to help someone, maybe to help with their down payment, to give them a couple more days, not to get their lights turned off, but you always come through, Mindy. So I really appreciate you. Last, the last meeting, I was in the hospital. This meeting, I'm here, when I saw your name on the agenda, it gave me the energy to jump up and come. So thank you very much.
At this time, the chair will recognize Pro Tim DeBailey. Father, Pro Tim DeBailey, we will recognize Councilman Braddock.
I'm sure everybody has their "Thank you, Mindy Taylor" comments, because we all love you and we appreciate you as a person, and we also appreciate all the work that you have done over all the years, going back to the previous iterations of the Energy Corporation, now currently Duke. But we all appreciate everything that you do. And I know Councilman Schofield, with the change of the lights to the LEDs, I'm sure he will want to chime in with the partnership between the city and Duke Energy and what y'all have done in so many big ways as well as little ways. But I think we, I can speak for all of us, and I'm sure everybody has their Mindy story, but thank you.
Councilman Braddock.
Yeah, I'll share mine. Well, I'm jealous of your job. You have a great job, and you do it well, being able to go around and share so much love from Duke Energy. You blessed the House of Hope and several other organizations here locally. Thank you for that. And, yeah, I was calling Mindy today, helping us get some power to the tiny homes. So I just want to thank you, and just, you have, right from the get-go, as far as me being on council with the work with Councilman Schofield with the lighting change, just been a huge impact player, and we appreciate you.
You know the councilmember at this time?
I might as well chime in. Yes, Mindy, thank you. We appreciate you more than you will ever know, and the services that y'all give to the citizens and to the local governments here is impeccable. Thank you.
If that concludes, once again, many thank you, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with you, as y'all have partnered with the city for years. Thank you for all that y'all do. And it's a great thing to have your company here. And so at this time, we do have, next on our agenda, Ms. Yvette Salas. Is Ms. Salas here? If not, that will bring to the close of our appearances before council, and we will move into our ordinance imposition. And the first ordinance we have for a second reading is Bill Number 202141, which is an ordinance to zone NC 15 pending annexation 2468, Parson Gate, identified on Florence County Tax Parcel, MAP Parcel Number 01221-01-323, which is a single-family resident in Forest, in Windsor Forest. Do we have a motion?
was in the hospital. This meeting, I'm here. When I saw your name on the agenda, it gave me the energy to jump up and come. So, thank you very much.
At this time, the chair will recognize Pro Tem J. Bailey. Following Pro Tem J. Bailey, we will recognize Councilman Braddock.
I'm sure everybody has their "Thank you, Mindy Taylor" comments because we all love you, and we appreciate you as a person. And we also appreciate all the work that you have done over all the years, going back to the previous iterations of the Energy Corporation, now currently Duke. But we all appreciate everything that you do. And I know Councilman Schofield, with the change of the lights to the LEDs, I'm sure he will want to chime in with the partnership between the city and Duke Energy and what y'all have done in so many big ways as well as little ways. But I think we, I can speak for all of us, and I'm sure everybody has their Mindy story. But thank you.
Councilman Braddock?
Yeah, I'll share mine. Well, I'm jealous of your job. You have a great job, and you do it well, being able to go around and share so much love from Duke Energy. You bless the House of Hope and several other organizations here locally. Thank you for that. And yeah, I was calling Mindy today, helping us get some power to the tiny homes. So, I just wanted to thank you, and just you have, right from the get-go, as far as me being on council with the work with Councilman Schofield with the lighting change, just been a huge impact player, and we appreciate you.
Another council member at this time?
I might as well chime in. Yes, Mindy, thank you. We appreciate you more than you will ever know. And the services that y'all give to the citizens and to the local governments here is impeccable. Thank you.
If that concludes, once again, many thank you. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with you as you've partnered with the city for years. Thank you for all that y'all do. And it's a great thing to have your company here. And so, at this time, we do have, next on our agenda, Ms. Yvette Salas. Is Ms. Salas here? If not, that will bring to the close of our appearances before council, and we will move into our ordinance in position. And the first ordinance we have for a second reading is Bill Number 2021-41, which is an ordinance to zone NC 15 pending annexation 2468, Parson Gate identified on Florence County Tax Parcel Map Parcel Number 01221-01-323, which is a single-family resident in Forest, in Windsor Forest. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-42 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to abandon the city's of Florence interest in the undeveloped portion of the public right-of-way of the Honey Hill Drive located behind 1911 through 1923 Hayden Court. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. It has, the bill has passed. Next, we have introductions of ordinance. The first one is, well, Bill Number 2021-12 for a first reading, but the staff has requested that we defer this. So, if there's no objection, we will defer this item. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-39 for a first and final reading. It's an ordinance to replace the existing emergency ordinance 2021-30 in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we, I have Randy before us here. So, do we have any discussion?
I have a question for City Manager.
Okay, we've got, we've got, we've got three. Okay, let me do this. Councilwoman Moore, Pro Tem J. Bailey, then Councilman Braddock, in that order, please.
Okay, this is, is this to put the mask mandate back in place?
Yes, ma'am. This, this is ordinance that's been on the agenda for a few months now. It's been deferred. This was discussed, I think, in December to require masks throughout the city versus the city-owned properties of the current emergency ordinance that we have.
I still move.
Okay. Next, we have Pro Tem.
It's my understanding that there's two items on the agenda that sort of interconnect in this regard. One is this one, which is, the first and final reading is an introduction to ordinance, which would be the mask mandate for the entire city as it was, I guess, several months ago. That we ended up not doing, sort of going away from, and now it's back before us to put it back in place. But that is, consumes, I suppose, Resolution Number 2022-03, which is at the bottom of the page on the agenda. And so, just for clarification purposes, if we pass the ordinance currently before us, what happens, if you don't mind explaining, what happens to the resolution down below? And just for clarity purposes?
Sure. The, the Resolution 2022-03, that would renew the, the current emergency ordinance, which is the ordinance, as you recall, that encourages the citizens of Florence to wear a mask. It allows us to continue to mandate mask-wearing in city facilities. It also allows the Zoom-type meetings if needed, or changes in schedule. The ordinance that's in front of you now covers all that, plus adds to, or yeah, adds the mask mandate citywide. So, if the ordinance that's in front of you now gets passed, then that replaces the current emergency ordinance, and therefore making Resolution 03 a moot point.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Braddock?
First of all, I want to thank council. This has come up for the last few months, and I want to thank council for giving the citizens of Florence an opportunity to do a couple of things. One is, is to get vaccinated. And we've seen that the citizens have responded by us encouraging them to do so without imposing any type of mandate to reach that 70% and exceed that. And also, you know, I've looked at other cities in the state, and it appears to me, and I could be wrong, please someone correct me, but Columbia has maintained a mandate throughout the whole process of the, of the pandemic. And their, their numbers don't indicate any difference in terms of rates of, of cases than any other cities that have had them in place and gotten rid of them. And, you know, one thing that I think we've learned during this time with the, with COVID is that it's immune to mandates. Mandates have been put in place since the beginning, and here we are in a situation where it is not, in a lot of ways, any better. The death rate's a lot lower, people are vaccinated. But what, what I've seen is that the people and the citizens of Florence are doing their part. I go to the grocery store, almost see 70, 80%. And as the numbers change, the masks come on and the masks go off. We ask people to test before they visited, and they responded well. So, I, I think that the citizens, we, we love one another, we treat each other as neighbors, and we've found that people are responding well to the information that's been given. They've responded well to the resolutions that we've put in place to encourage. But COVID's immune to mandates, and we can put this mandate in place. We're just going to stress our business owners. We're going to stress our already depleted and stressed-out police force. And, and I understand, I want to go along with the will of council, but I, I just, I don't think that we're going to have the impact that we're looking for.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Moore, following Councilwoman Moore.
Okay. With the first mandate, the mask mandate, a lot of people wasn't wearing them. But now, we have a new variant, and a lot more people are getting sick and being hospitalized. I don't understand why it's so difficult just to put a mask on. Are we tired of it? Yes, we are all, we are all tired of wearing masks. But we're tired of our family members getting sick. We're tired of hearing that people are dying from COVID. I don't see the problem about having a mask mandate. I really don't. We need to help ourselves. And a lot of people still not wearing masks, a lot of them still haven't gotten vaccinated. Because I can call out about 10 family members that hasn't gotten vaccinated. So, it's not, it's not like everybody's doing what they should because they're not. When you go to the supermarket, you see more people without a mask than, than with the mask. It's not that we, it's not that I personally want to hurt anyone or tell them what they need to do. But if we won't, if we won't do it on our, if we won't do it ourselves, if we won't do what is right, then we have to put something in place to make people do what's right, or to try and help them do what's right, because it's getting worse out there. I think Dr. Fauci said the other day that we're at the million mark. Do we want to keep going higher and higher? We need to do what we need to do to get this thing out and over with. The vaccine, again, people think, "Well, I got the shot." Okay, you got the shot. That doesn't exempt you from getting sick. A very close friend of mine, she went to visit someone during the holidays and came back with COVID. And that's what's been happening lately. People are just getting COVID, not really knowing why because they're doing their part. But the vaccination doesn't stop, doesn't prevent you from getting COVID. It just makes you, it makes it, you don't get as sick. But you're still going to be dizzy, and you're still going to have all the things that go with it. So, I don't, we, we need to, like the last time, when we voted against the mask mandate, well, I didn't vote against it. But why can't we vote for it, and then things improve? Then we come back, even if it's a special meeting, to take it away. I don't understand why we can't vote for success. And then, if it does, if our success is a failure, oh, well. But we can always have a special meeting to take the mandate away if things improve. But things are not improving. I see less and less people with masks on now. Everyone in this room has one on because they don't have a choice. They don't have an option. But I think once, there's meetings over, a lot of masks are going to fly away. They're going to fly off.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Pro Tem. Following Pro Tem, chair will recognize Councilmember McCall.
Following up on what Councilwoman Moore said, assuming that this passes, my understanding is that it has a terminus built into it of 60 days unless we vote to extend it. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, this is not a permanent kind of thing. This is a recognition that the numbers have gone back up, that they're, assuming we pass it, that it's during this time of the Omicron now, and that we'll, we would have a chance 60 days from now to take them, you know, it would expire unless we, the numbers were back up.
That's correct. It's, it's a 60-day emergency.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCall.
Simply put, I think it's, it's time. The numbers have, have rose tremendously. I think we, when we deferred it the last time, I said we will check the numbers out from the holidays, and exactly what happened, expired. So, simply put, it's time. And that's all I got to say.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify. Let me see a hand so I know we have a correct count. All in favor by raising of hands showing aye. Okay. Okay. All those opposed, like sign by raising of a hand?
No.
Okay. Let the minutes reflect that the ordinance has passed, Bill Number 2021-39 for first and final reading. And also, because this bill has passed, the Resolution Number 2022-03 will be covered under this bill, so we will not have to address Resolution 2022-03. Thank you, Council. Thank you. And thank to, thank you, council. So, at this time, our next bill for first reading is an ordinance to adopt a redistricting plan for three single-member districts of the City of Florence and with Florence-South Carolina. And according to the federal decile census of the 2020, and it is on here, suggested if there are no objection, that this item may be discussed in executive session, should the council need legal advice.
I move to defer.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't, I think we should.
I'd like to hear from Clint, though, whether he has a second.
She said discussion.
Yes. I'm saying, as part of the discussion, that's all.
Well, you can go right ahead and do your discussion, and we'll get information. If Councilmember McCall, do you want to hear first, or do you want to do your discussion?
I will make a motion that we discuss this further in this executive session.
Do we have a second? Our second. So, at this time, council, we have a motion and a second that we proceed to have this discussed in executive session. What is the will of council? Do you want to signify by saying majority of aye that we?
Which one we voting on now?
Executive session.
The executive session. All those in favor of executive session?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Late to the show. So, if, if we go into executive session, we can still vote, we can still come out and vote to defer the first reading, to allow for the, the plans to be, have the public hearings, correct? We can still come out and defer. Is that correct?
Always understand that when we go into executive session, so that we can receive information, legal advice, and then we can always come out and do an action. Executive session does not preclude any action that we may take. It's just so that we can get clarification on matters, legal matters, any information that we would want to. So, that doesn't preclude any action you take. When you get out, you can still motion to do what actions that you want to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
But, you know, also, we, we did have a motion on there, on here, to actually defer. Will, will the motioner be willing to withdraw that defer?
Well, no, I think what we'll do is pending the, after we come out of executive session, then we will vote on the motion to defer. So, I think we vote on the motion to defer, and then if we, assuming we go into executive session, which I have no problem with, then we come back out, and the motion to defer is still on table.
So, you want to leave the motion to defer on the table until we go through executive session?
Yes.
And you want to hear from Clint?
Yes.
So, Councilmember McCall, are you fine with going, proceeding to hear from Clint to give us information? And we're still going to executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam, Madam Mayor, we're talking about now 2022, right?
We're, actually.
We already voted on the first and final reading.
Well, we're on Bill Number 2022-01 for first reading, for the ordinance to adopt a redistricting plan for the three, so we're on that one, C.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. So, we'll hear from Clint, and then we'll still plan to go into executive session and have further discussion after that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance to, at you all's discretion, to determine on how we will proceed moving forward. Today, city staff has been able to meet with each council member individually. We have developed three separate options for the redistricting, which is required. It is required to, to do so in a manner as expeditiously as possible, preferably prior to the next election. There are a few options on how to proceed, which we can discuss later, which are to move forward with one of the options that we have presented, move forward with all three of the options, or defer the action. And so, what, right now, city staff is planning to move forward with public hearings, which will take place February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And we will hold these in each of the three separate districts, 1, 2, and 3. This will go out to, to the, the public and the paper on the location and time. And this week, it'll probably be put in the notice the 1st of next week. So, that will be the, the next action steps. And then, depending on what action is taken at this council meeting, we'll determine what we, we take at the next council's meeting.
Thank you, Clint. Do we have any questions for Clint?
Yeah, defer, do we defer it to, well, I guess we got option to defer it to. Are we saying defer to next month, or defer? I guess that's up to council, right?
That's correct.
So, we can discuss that further in executive session?
Okay.
Okay. All right. We will discuss Bill Number 2022-0, that's year 1, in executive session. Next, we have Bill Number 2022-02 for a first reading, and it's an ordinance to annex and to zone 1146 Anella Drive, identified as Florence County Tax Parcel, Tax Map Parcel Number 01794-03-010 at this time. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? And we have a motion and a second. And at this time, we're here from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of Council. This property is located in the Pine Forest Community, off of Pampico Highway, as you can see in the map here. And it is a single-family residential structure. The proposed zoning is NC 15. That is in agreement with the adjacent land uses and the existing conditions of the lot. Water and sewer is available, and Planning Commission did recommend unanimously 7 to 0 to recommend this parcel for this zoning. And here's a picture of the property. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Is there any further discussion?
Motion to approve.
We, we have a motion and a second already on. So, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed first reading. Next on our agenda, we do have Resolution Number 2021-41, but the staff has requested that we defer this. So, if there's no objection, we will defer Resolution Number 2021-41. Next, we have Resolution Number 2022, that's year 1, is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the American Recovery Plan Act fund for the corridor enhancement and gateway improvement by the City of Florence. And if there's no objections, this item also may be discussed in executive section.
Madam Mayor?
Chair recognizes Pro Tem J. Bailey.
Thank you. I, I, as I understand it, City Manager has an amendment for us that he will be presenting. And so, that the, what we'll have before us is the amended resolutions. I would ask that we allow the City Manager to give his presentation.
So, we, we need a motion and a second. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
So, we have a motion and a second. So, at this time, if there's no further discussion, we'll go and hear from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. The, the original ordinance in front of you came to you from the Business Development Committee. This ordinance was a request to utilize up to $1 million of the American Rescue Plan Act to work with improving corridors and gateways within the city limits. The, during some discussion with, with council members, there was a concern about, for lack of a better term, monopolizing the ARP money and what other potential avenues might be existing to still meet the desires of the, of council with, without committing a million dollars of the ARP money. What you have in front of you is, after reviewing the, our budget, our financial situations, this is a proposal that would allow 700, up to $700,000 of American Rescue Plan money to go towards gatewayed improvement. And if council's desire to... And if council's desire to, to make that a million dollars, the additional 300,000 would be funded through other city sources out of this year, of the current fiscal year's budget, as well as, uh, next fiscal year's budget.
Madam Mayor, what I would move is to substitute the amended, the amended resolution in place of the existing resolution, so that we can vote on the amended resolution.
We have a motion to substitute the amended resolution? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And I will still, at this point, request that, are we going, going to executive session to discuss this amended resolution?
On behalf of the Business Development Committee, which this is a product of the Business Development Committee, I see no need for executive session on this.
Okay, we have discussion. Any discussion? I would like to have the business committee, our councilmen, please identify the corridor enhancement. Do you plan to utilize the funds?
Thank you. I, I think, uh, Mr. Moore is prepared to give us a presentation on the corridor enhancements. That is going to be covered by us. And I think this is something that the, if I just, for a second elaborate, the Business Development Committee has been looking, along with the whole city, for many years, at our decaying corridors all around, bleeding in and out of the city. And, uh, that's one of the obstacles to further development in our cities. We need to improve our corridors to try to bring in good jobs and recruit businesses. So, um, this is part of an ongoing effort. That's been ongoing for many years in the city, and the Business Development Committee recognizes that, and this is a, an action step to do that. And thank you, Clint, for being here with us and giving us a presentation today.
They're going to switch over to the, thank you. Yes, staff was asked to, to give a, a very brief presentation on gateways, where we have identified those, where we have it within our policies, like the comprehensive plan, some of the other plans that we have adopted. In our original comprehensive plan from 2010, uh, it was, it was very clear throughout that the four major in, entryways into the city, uh, these corridors being I-95, US-52 interchange, uh, the East Palmetto, West Palmetto, and South Irving Street entering into our city were, were key areas that we needed to take a look at and develop solutions on how to best create a, an attractive, uh, well-developed entryway into our city. So, uh, this, uh, the, the larger map is from our 2010 comprehensive plan, uh, which spoke to those goals and objectives. And then in 2018, I believe, we partnered with the County of Florence to develop the 76 Gateway Study, which was essentially from Francis Marion University into the city. Moving forward, what you'll see is even more of an emphasis on these gateways. It is the, the, the front door to our city. It's the way, it's the first things people see when they enter. It's what we can often be identified as when we, uh, we have visitors and residents and others coming to the city. Uh, so again, the, the 2020 comprehensive plan, which will be adopted this year, will speak to I-95, US-52 again, as well as East and West Palmetto and South Irving Street. And then, uh, we get a little more detailed in our upcoming 2020 Downtown Master Plan, where it, it speaks more directly to the, the Central Business District and some of those corridors entering into the city. So mainly focusing in on Irving Street and Palmetto Street being the two major entrances, as well as some of the secondary entrances like Chevus, Evan Street, Coates Street, and others. And so what we have identified throughout both previous plans and, and this upcoming plan are the solutions and how, how we do that. So through zoning and cooperation, like we have with the, the 76 Gateway Study with the county partnerships, uh, what we have coming online currently with the, the old Pecan property that we purchased on US-52, it is currently getting redeveloped. And then, of course, gateway projects as we find those funds, but in partnership with DOT, county, and many others, uh, to develop those gateway projects. So, uh, just wanted to, to do a quick, uh, touch on some of those plans that we have adopted previously, as well as those that will be coming in pipeline here this coming year.
Thank you.
And also, Clint, now with these project, have you, have you had time, or are you at a place where you identified any costs identified with these?
No, typically, these plans only identify those, those, uh, the, the concept of it. So, uh, where, where they exist, potential solutions to that, and the feasibility and the cost of those are really determined when opportunity comes, and staff and working with, with others make that estimate and feasibility to the project.
So there's no price tag yet with those particular projects?
That's correct.
And also with the corridor improvements, I noticed one of the map to show for the downtown area, I know the Downtown Development Corporation also is looking at the corridor. With Irving Street, I did notice that South Irving was on there, but also it should be noted that North Irving is a gateway interest as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is a gateway interest. I know that the city and the state and the county did cooperate to get improvements. So even as we're developing our plan, we do need to remember that improvements need to be done north, south, east, and west. The north needs to be included. And so, um, that is one aspect that I find even serving through the years that we tend to forget, and if you don't put it in writing, that means it's not done. So as we are doing this, the north end of Irving, which is a major corridor entryway, needs to be reflected in there. And also, with this amendment here, our resolution was last minute, uh, if any council want to discuss, they're welcome to discuss. I do want to make sure that we review and have this kind of viewed line by line, unless we're going to executive section, so we can look at it more. So, does any other discussion, or anyone comment on this particular part? So now, at this time, is the will of council? Do you want to review this document and vote, or do you want to go into executive session, have more time to look at the details? What is the will of council?
Call the question.
I don't know what we're voting on.
We're voting on.
Excuse me, excuse me. What we're voting on now, whether or not to go ahead and approve this amendment? Uh, will we go into executive session so we can review this amendment and resolution? Cause we're going to review the other one too. So do you want to have time to review this, or do you want to vote on without reading? That's what we have. So what are we going to do? Are we going into executive session? Are we going to vote at this time?
I've called the question, Madam Mayor.
So all those in favor who wants to vote on the resolution as standing?
The amended resolution.
Signify, amended resolution. Signify by saying aye, a sure hand, so we can get a count.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have two, five, those opposed, I oppose. So at this time, we are now going to vote on the amended resolution.
I thought that was the amended resolution.
Well, you're substituting this in for the original resolution.
Oh, okay. Now you want to vote on the resolution itself?
Yes, now you did vote on the resolution itself.
I got you, okay.
So at this time, all those in favor of the amended resolution signify, do we have a, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, like sign? Nay. So let it reflect that resolution number, amended resolution number 2022, that's year one, has passed first reading. Next, we have Resolution number 2022, that's year two, a resolution authorizing the Spinning of American Recovery Plan Act Fund for demolition of abandoned homes in the City of Florence. This item is scheduled to be discussed in executive session unless there are no objections.
motion?
So if, if there are no objections, we will discuss the, the section. Item number, Resolution 2022 dash zero three, we were, was covered under the prior ordinance above, so we will not need to discuss that. Next, we have Resolution number 2022 dash zero four, a resolution committing the City of Florence staff to participate in the Municipal Association of South Carolina Retail Recruitment Training Program upon the city's acceptance into the program, and supporting the city's application there too. Do we have a motion? Some move. Do we have a second? Second. So we have a motion and a second. We can have discussion with our city manager is available for any discussion. Randy, you want to discount this?
Yes, yes, ma'am. This is the second year that the Municipal Association of South Carolina has offered a, a retail recruitment training program. I think it's 15 cities, 10 to 15 cities a year that's accepted in the program. The, the first year was a great success for those that were attending. We thought it would be a very good idea for Florence to participate in the program, and one of the aspects of the application process is for council to pass a resolution that commits us to the, the training. And that's what we're asking you today.
Any discussion, any questions from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, and opposed like sign. Let it reflect that Resolution number 2022 dash year four has passed. Next, we have report to council, and our city manager will be handling this portion, his appointment to boards and commissions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This month, we have one potential action as it comes to boards and commissions, and that is to fill an expired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have one member of the, the Board of Zoning Appeals who is seeking a reappointment, that is Nathaniel Poston. We have one applicant who has expressed interest in the Board of Zoning Appeals, that is Michael Tommy Phillips. And that nomination goes to Councilwoman Barnes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Can you give me those names again?
Yes, ma'am. The current serving, uh, member who's seeking reappointment is Nathaniel Poston. The applicant is Michael Tommy Phillips.
Let's keep the current serving, um, Poston.
So, Chair is recog, um, excuse me, Councilwoman Barnes, your nomination name, please, for the record?
Nathaniel Poston.
Do we have a second for that motion? Does she have a motion and a second? Any question or discussion? All those in favors of Mr. Poston, appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that Mr. Poston has been reappointed. Next.
All right, Mayor, Mayor and council. The, uh, although we have several openings on other boards and commissions, unfortunately at this time, uh, we do not have any applicants or, or people of interest. So we would encourage, or continue to encourage citizens of Florence to apply, to help the community and, and serve on these boards, but that would be all the actions necessary today.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
So at this time, we proceed into our committee report. First on our agenda is a report from our Business Development Committee. We're here for that chair, please.
Thank you. And I'm pleased to report on behalf of the Business Development Committee and Councilwoman Barnes, Councilman Schofield, that we had a wonderful meeting, and we welcomed in Stephanie Bosch, the Florence County Economic Development, um, from Florence County Economic Development, who gave us a really detailed presentation on the status of where things are with economic development in Florence County. Good news is that we had a lot of development in the county, not only new businesses coming in, but also existing businesses growing, and that, uh, many new jobs, several hundred new jobs were added, uh, high-quality jobs were added to what we have here. And for quality of life purposes, having a really good job that pays well is something that we all support, which we know is a critical aspect of, uh, growing our community and making our community the kind of place that people want to move to, want to live in, want to remain in, and our children want to come back to. She, um, began by talking about how, um, PD Commerce Park, um, Innovation Construction Group will locate, is a new announcement that came in with an initial investment of 35.6 million, and that that's job is going to create 100 and, excuse me, that company is going to create 179 new jobs. And as I understand it, it's a company that does, um, essentially helps put together, like, uh, joists for walls and ceilings, and then it gets delivered on site. So there'll be a lot of pre-construction, putting together of work here that'll be done, and then they'll be shipped to sites to help, um, cut down the costs of construction, new construction. So this is a very big win for us in Florence County. She, was also discussed how the city is going to be working and has continuing to work, and I, I can tell you, uh, our, um, Utilities Director, Michael Hemingway, was praised highly for the work that he does, and thank you, Michael, particularly with Niagara, and, which is a very heavy consumer of the City of Florence water, uh, as they produce bottled water for a number of different companies. And Stephanie and everybody, Joe King and everyone, has sang the praises of the City of Florence, but Michael Hemingway in particular, for the work that you do, tireless work that you do, um, to help, because we own the water system in the area, and obviously, if we don't have, and, and that was told to us that, that's why we ended up with Niagara, is because the City of Florence has such a strong water system. So, but for all the work that was done to put in place, uh, the, um, water plant and produce the high-quality volume of water that we have, we would not be getting this new industrial development. So thank you, Michael. Thank you to the City of Florence. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard on that. And Stephanie did talk about the fact that, um, the initial investment on Niagara was 150 million and 200-plus jobs, but that in fact, it's now 750,000 square foot building. It's grown because of what they've seen from the City of Florence. So that's a big, big plus for us, and, and we need to be very proud of that as we go forward. Product development in the economic development is, is, um, trying to find sites and executive and, and buildings, and we got an update on that from her, uh, and what needs to get done as well. And the economic development goal is to have all new jobs provide at least $20 an hour. So when we're, Florence County is out soliciting and looking for industry to come in, we're looking to bring in jobs that are $20 an hour jobs or better. So that's, that's what is being told, and that's the kind of companies that they're looking for. One of the things touching on what Clint's report is that the, currently, that's, some of these gateways into Florence are, are a real hindrance to economic development. You can't unsee what you've seen, and you, and first, you always are, have first impressions. So I do think the resolution that passed the Business Development Committee that was amended before us will see very strong benefits very quickly. And we're excited about the opportunity to see some major, um, activity take place very soon that will allow us to start turning around some of these blighted areas in our community, that are some of these corridors, and make a huge difference. So the, um, Business Development Committee was, had that as a report, um, and we were very pleased and to see the progress that's made, but there's a lot of work ahead of us. And I would ask if either Councilwoman Barnes or Councilman Schofield has anything further to add to the report?
No.
Covered the bases.
You covered it.
Thank you, Chair, for that report. At this time, we proceed to have a report from the Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Well, I am super, super excited that, um, on last month, we did pass, um, $6 million, 1.2 million dollars to go into our communities. And I am very, very excited that soon you will see the hard work of coun, council and, and, um, staff members. Just to give you, um, first, we, we got our, our CDC off, and we've got our board members appointed, um, the- They will have their first meeting on January the twentieth. And on that day, they will get the bylaws and hear of our listening tour that we went on in the community and hear the concerns of the blighted areas and the things that we are looking for and even shown things that even staff has already proposed. We are looking forward to some of the things that we were talking about doing. We're talking about demolishing homes. We are talking about cleaning up our areas. We are talking about educating our people in the communities, partnering with the local schools so we may can get people who are coming out of jail or they are people who don't, that's just around doing nothing. We want to give them skills so that they could possibly help to rebuild and probably refurbish these abandoned, not abandoned homes, but the homes that need renovating. There are so many projects that's ongoing that when we heard from our community, we are now addressing that through these committees. The CDC will be working on some of these, but the community redevelopment will also continue this work. We divided the money. CDC will get two million of that and the community redevelopment, while working with the city staff, will have the four million set aside for that. So, as you can see, we have a lot going on and a lot that's coming up. We also are trying to look at a kid and family fun day on the parks. Because in order to educate our people, we've got to have a central location. And so, we want to see how we could bring them together and love on them and lift them up as well. So, there's a lot going on and soon you will see a lot of the hard planning and work that we all have done. But I would like to thank council for their support in voting for us to move forward in our communities by allowing us to get the money of the one point two million dollars a year for five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that report. Next on our agenda, we have a report from the Marketing and Public Relations Committee. We're here from that chair at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met last month in December and we had a presentation by Holly Beaumayet, Beaumayet, Executive Director of Florence Convention and Visitors Bureau. We talked about ways that the city can continue to partner with their organization to make sure that we're effectively communicating, communicating to the external person about what the City of Florence has to offer and how we want to move the city forward. In addition to that, we discussed the development of a citywide communication strategy as well as civic pride campaign. Our next meeting, we will have Mr. Jerry Dudley give us a presentation about annexation and how can we effectively come up with a strategy to annex some of these donut holes into our, annex some of the donut holes into the city and allow people to understand the benefit that they do get, they do receive from annexing into the city. So, I think that's about all. If you have anything, George or Brian, did I miss?
Thank you, Chair, for that report. Next on our agenda, we have a report.
Madam Mayor.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
But I'm on the Community Development Committee and I just want to have something I want to say.
Yes, ma'am.
We did that bush tour and we looked at a lot of different areas and saw a lot of different things that needs to be, needs to be done. But since that time, I'm the type person, and I don't mean any harm, but I'm the type person, if something needs to be done, I'm not going to just wait for meetings. I'm going to try and make it happen. So, that, I don't even know if you remember Peaches or, I mean, don't even.
That's okay.
Or if Shaquaz remembers. We went down one street, Howard Street in East Florence, and these big bush containers was there filled with trash and all kinds of stuff and had been there for over a year. That area was becoming overgrown even because of those containers. I am the type, I can't just wait. If I know something needs to be done, I'm going to try and make it happen. I got with codes enforcement. I spoke with the guy that owns Bush. He was giving me a hard time at first. I got with codes enforcement and I said, if this thing isn't moved by whatever date I said, Matthew, then I'm going to have the media. Well, let me tell you, they got it moved. You can't play around with people because they're not going to do what you want them to do. You have to get out there and work and get it done yourself. And I was getting that done from the hospital. I talked to Matthew. I talked to Tony, the only person I didn't talk to, Lacy. But the containers are gone. Now, we just need to find out who that field belongs to and get them to cut it. But sometimes meetings are good and we accomplish a lot through meetings. Lots accomplished through the Community Development Committee. But there are some things that I just can't wait and I'll get it done if I can. And I thank codes enforcement for all the help that they give. There are just certain areas and Michael Hemingway is always on target. I mean, he's the only, he's one of the only city workers, not the only one of the only that I can call on a Saturday afternoon and say, this is happening, this is, and he gets his crew out there to fix it. And his crew will tell you, Michael works really hard. But then there's a but, this but, he's out there working right along with us. So, thank you, Michael.
So, at this time, we'll move on to item number D, which is Banking Service Evaluation and Recommendation Committee to make a recommendation on the designation of a bank to provide banking service to the City of Florence for a five-year contract period beginning February first twenty twenty-two and ending January thirty-first twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. At this time, we're here from Mr. Yocum.
Madam Mayor and members of council, our existing banking services contract currently expires January thirty-first. So, therefore, last fall, the city solicited, issued an RFP to receive proposals for the next five-year period. The city received three proposals. Those were given to the Banking Services Evaluation and Recommendation Committee comprised of Councilman Braddock, McCall, and Schofield. That committee met on December twenty-ninth. And with that, I will turn it over to Chairman Schofield of that committee to make a recommendation to full council.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schofield.
It's the committee's recommendation for the city to maintain its current financial institution for the next five years.
All right. Any discussion? If not, we have a motion to proceed with a recommendation from our banking committee that will continue with the present institution to provide.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Thank you. And let it reflect that we have passed and we continue with our present banking services. At this time, if there's no objection, we will have our executive session, which will have aid to receive legal advice related to redistricting thirty dash four dash seventy-eight two and for discussion of economic development project thirty dash four dash seven zero eight five and to receive legal advice on thirty dash four seventy-eight to relate to expenditures of the American Rescue Plan Fund. If there are no objections, we will go into executive session. Thank you. We have returned from executive session in, at which time, no matters, we're taking no actions or vote. So, at this time, we will proceed our agenda. And the item that we had first was item to receive legal advice relating to redistricting. And that item is item number C, which is Bill number twenty twenty-two dash zero one, which was up for a first reading. And we did have a motion on the floor with the second to defer this until our February meeting. Is there any discussions at this point?
At this time, I'm going to make a motion. Make a motion to defer your, I'm going to make an amendment to your, to your motion. Right? Is that my?
I thought what Jim said.
At this time, we can vote this one up or down. And then if we do vote it down, then we can enter another motion.
So, call the question.
At this time, we have the motion with a second. If there's no, we have had a call for the question, correct?
Hold on, I have a question. What am I voting on again? I want to make sure.
Okay, we have, we have an emotion, we have a motion in a second to defer today's reading of this ordinance to our February meeting. So, that is the motion. So, and question has been called. All those in favor of deferring to the February meeting, please present a show of hand. There's a show of three hands. All those opposed to deferring to the February meeting do the same action alike. We are voting whether or not to defer to February. Three wants to defer to February. Now, we're voting that. If we vote it down.
That's four to three.
The councilwoman, you vote, now we have four. She was clarifying before she cast the vote. So, now, the motion to defer to February has been voted down. Do we have any other motion?
I just, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we, being that we have the twenty twenty census already in place and I think we've, we've had our advice that we are within the variance to not make a significant change to our maps. I think at this time, I think to avoid the appearance of any wrongdoing or flakiness, that we wait until after the election on November third, twenty twenty-two. So, I'm making a motion that we defer this redistricting to November, after the November third, twenty twenty-two election, general election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second that we defer any action to redistricting based on the fact that we have received our benchmark information and census status. And we will defer any further actions to after the November third, twenty twenty-two election. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Chair recognizes Pro Tem.
The concern I have and why I made the motion to defer is that this is obviously something that's of critical importance to our entire community. And council, I mean, staff has already indicated that there were to be public hearings to get public input on a variety of different topics, one of which could be the deferring of the election, any redistricting until after the election. That's one of the options that our city attorney has said was available to us. I think during this process of having the public hearings, it gives the public opportunity to give us feedback and input. And it's of concern to me that council today is taking action without seeking public input and the action being that we're not going to take any action. And that's action. Whether you take action, don't take action, whether you vote to do something or don't do something, you're doing something. And so, that's what's happening now and the public is being shut out of this, hundred percent being shut out of it, even though we have the opportunity to, if we defer it to next month, to have the public input. And the same outcome could occur after next, after next month's meeting where we've had a chance to hear from the public, to have those three public hearings held. But now, this would be first reading of an ordinance. And I think it's a, certainly to defer on it, you'd have to have a second reading on it, but I still think that it is shutting the public out and in such, it is creating a perception to the community that they are being locked out of something and I think that's wrong. If this is too important a matter to take a stand that says, we don't want to hear from you, public. This is once every ten years thing and you have an election coming up, the lines, you have growth that has occurred, there's census blocks that are broken, there's issues that are out there. Our city attorney has not had a chance to, because he's out today, he hasn't had a chance to look at everything. And so, to defer this on the ordinance, because the ordinance that's currently pending is one that I think you're looking to amend the ordinance, I imagine, to defer the election. That's what I hear you saying. Is that right, Councilman McCall? You're trying to amend the current ordinance that's before us to, so that, to defer the election, to any, any accepting of redistricting until after the election.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's an amendment to the ordinance. And so, that amendment, I think shuts out the public hearing. And so, I do not think it's a good idea to shut the public out. I think we need to go forward with the public hearings and to get public input on this because it's too critical to try to shut the public out. Thank you.
Correction. The motion that's on the floor is to delay the ordinance, any action until after. So, Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
I don't appreciate the rhetoric that was just, was just thrown out there. I really did not. But nevertheless, as discussed, in twenty-ten, there was no action taken on a map. There was no public hearings until after, after the elections. Then there was a public hearing. There was no rhetoric about shutting people out or anything of that such. We're voting, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to rush a map through the March election. That's wrong. Everyone else knows it's wrong. The only legitimate way that we keep the integrity of our elections together is to take this issue up after the election in twenty, November of twenty twenty-two. That's the only reasonable and legitimate way to do this. This, the same thing happened again in two thousand and ten and they not adopt the maps until twenty fourteen. The same thing will happen here. We will wait until after the elections to address this issue and the public can then still have, we could have public hearings before we adopt the map. But basically, we're saying we are within the legal guidelines to not change it. And the standard is what's changing the maps within a reasonable time. We've got legal advice that within a year, and it could be losses as involved and that's fine, but within a year is way different than what's four years with the previous time. It was a four-year term before they changed the maps. This here was, was way, this here would be way less than the four-year term. So, again, I am very, very, very humble, not humble, but upset about it, about the rhetoric that's coming out of this. I'm not, but I'm upset about the rhetoric that's came out of this because I think that the integrity of our elections is very important and waiting till after the November twenty-twenty election is what's needed and that's what I'm going to support.
And I was, well, you know, I want to give every council member time to speak first. I was, I will give my time over to Councilman Braddock and then Councilman Pro Tem, I'll go and I'll follow you out. Go ahead, Council.
I have one question. If we, we voted down the amendment to defer to last, next month, if we vote down the amendment to defer after the election, where does that leave us?
We'll come to that bridge if we approach it.
Okay.
Recognizes pro tem.
Let me make it clear. Under no circumstances have I appointed any particular person and certainly I would never personally say anything against Councilman McCall in any way. I do think there's a perception and that's, and maybe I inartfully said it. And if so, I apologize for that. But I think there's a perception that the public could have that that is what we're doing by either taking action or not taking action. My point is, again, and if I said it incorrectly or inartfully, I apologize. My point is that by, if we delayed it to any vote on our part until next month, that would allow full opportunity on all matters to be heard by the public by continuing forward with the public hearings. That was what I said. And if I said anything that is otherwise than that, if it was somehow taken that way, well. taken that way, well, that was not my intent, and I apologize.
Excellent.
Well, to the general public on my behalf, I do want you to know, they're referring back to 2010, and I served during that time period. Just be aware that as a council, we have received information, and from, based on our 2010 census and coming up here to 2020 during this time period, our census during that time period has not deviated enough to even change where we're at now. So we have met the benchmarks that are required. We are within that deviation. So there is no legal reason why we have to make any changes at this time period. So we can therefore elect to take up redistricting after the 2022 elections, which will keep us from causing any kind of change or conflict with this year's election. And so we will still be operating within our percentages for our elected areas, so that would not change. And then, by waiting to after the November election cycle, we still will receive public input. So regardless to what, the public will have input, and the biggest input was your participating in the census, so we thank you for that. But no, by deferring today, if we choose to defer, the public will still be able to have public input. There will be public hearings, and then we will not interfere with the elections, and after that, we can look at it without any pressure to do what's going to be best for the city moving forward in the future. Is there any?
I have a point of order question.
Chair recognizes pro tem.
This is a point of order question for our city attorney. Jim?
Yes, sir.
The motion to defer to, the first reading on this matter has now been defeated, and so what's currently before us is the ordinance, first reading on the ordinance. And as I understand it, the, the, either, where we are procedurally is, is this first, a motion to amend the ordinance, first reading on the ordinance? Is that what we're voting on now? Or is this, procedurally, I think there's a concern that I have in terms of how, what we're voting on now and how that is handled. It seems to me that it's somehow an amendment to the ordinance for first reading or something. I'm not sure.
No, I think what is presently before council is a procedural motion, just like the first motion to defer was a procedural motion. This is a motion to defer consideration of redistricting until after the November election. So this is not a motion to amend the ordinance, it's a motion to defer consideration of the ordinance until after a set event in the future.
Can, can the, can council, my understanding is a deferral by, motion to defer by council can only be a one-month deferral.
That is certainly the norm, yes.
I'm not aware of the ability of council to make a deferral of consideration of an item, because we have that Oakwood, Lake Oakdale one that keeps coming up every month that we keep deferring. I'm not aware, from a parliamentary standpoint, of our ability to defer.
I can table it.
Beyond any one month procedurally.
It is my understanding that council can defer for a specific period of time. That is allowed. Yeah, that's not the norm, just like that Oakdale ordinance. You know, when, when all we do is vote to defer, then it stays on the agenda. It doesn't go away, it stays on the agenda.
Could we not have a heat reading, the first reading get voted up or down? And then it comes off, if, let's say, first reading is voted on and it's voted against, then it's done, right?
That's correct.
Would that not be a, procedurally, a better approach to how to address this issue?
I mean, certainly that would have the effect of defeating the ordinance that is presently before council, and, and ordinance could be introduced later to address it again.
Because we need, otherwise, I mean, in any event, we'd have to have two readings on whatever we decide to do, and so whether it's to delay it beyond the election or to do whatever we want to do, the ordinance is required two readings procedurally.
No, to pass an ordinance requires two readings. To defer an ordinance does not require two readings.
Right. Jim, for?
To defeat an ordinance does not require two readings.
Right.
Does that complete your question, Pro Tem? So at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember McCall.
Yeah, so Jim, is it, procedurally, is it better for us to, for me to ask to defer it, or table it, or just allow it to the original, the original ordinance as listed to, I guess, vote up or down? Which, from a, from a procedural standpoint, which is, is the, is the, is the best route?
A motion to table is not one that is recognized in our system. I think a motion to defer for a specific period of time can be allowed, and the same thing could be accomplished by voting the ordinance down on first reading, with then an ordinance later being re-introduced.
So Jim, where we're at right now, we can vote to defer this item to after the November elections, and then we can take it back up after the November 22 election, correct?
I think you can, yes, ma'am.
Is there any other questions for the attorney? If not, we have a motion in a second to defer Bill Number 2022, that's your one, until after the November election. So is there any other discussions? If not, all those in favor of deferring, please signify by raising your hand so we can see a count. So let, let's, record reflects four has voted to defer. All those who vote, like to vote nay, please signify by showing your hands so we have a count. Let the record reflect that we have three who voted against. Let the record reflect that Bill Number 2022-0-1 has been voted upon to be deferred after the November 22 election. Thank you, thank you for that. And next we have, we had Economic Development Project that we received information on, and there was no legal action, I will take it upon that. Next, we have an item in relationship to expenditure of the American Recovery, excuse that, Rescue Plan Funds, which was Resolution Number 2022-02, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the Rescue Plan Action Funds for demolitions of abandoned homes in the City of Florence. That's a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in the second that we pass Resolution Number 2022 to allocate funding toward the demolition of abandoned home.
I'd like, I'd like to make-
Is there any discussion? If so, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
I'd like to make an amendment to that, that motion. The motion was to, the motion is to allot this money to go into, I, I don't even know the resolution that we number on last month, but for this monies to go towards what we voted on last month, for city staff to do just what the, the ordinance is saying, to demolish homes.
You have a amendment, do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor to amend whatever the information was last month, to have the funds go into that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Let it be shown that S4, all those opposed, show your hands. All right. Let it reflect that the, there's a motion approved, been amended, to amend the motion for the fundings for demolition of the homes to be retroacted to whatever was passed last month, is what's on the floor. Is there any discussion? I will discuss. The, the resolution that we have.
Madam-
Is the resolution to-
I believe we've already voted on this, and it's already over now.
No, we've voted to do the amendment, so I'm asking for discussion.
Oh, I got you.
So now we can discuss, yes.
I'm with you, never mind.
So the discussion is, it's for the public. The City of Florence has had an issue with dilapidated homes for many years, and what has occurred is our Community Service Department has always taken allocation from our Community Development Block grant funding. They take those funds and they work toward doing demolition for the homes. At presently, we have over 100 homes in this, in the City of Florence that need to be done for demolition. So presently, we have approximately $20,000 left in order to do the demolition. That would take care of maybe one or two homes. So what was proposed in the original resolution was to simply have this council take the American Recovery Plan money, take $500,000 of that, and allocate it to our Community Service Department to do their jobs. That was the only thing we needed to vote on, because the Community Service Department is the one who will do this. But for some reason, this council wanted to take the money, say to go through whatever was done last meet, meeting from the Community Service Department. So we don't even have clear statement of what to be done, and there was a clear statement that everyone wanted everything to be so transparent. So for me, the resolution is simply asking this council to fund our city department to do their jobs. No matter how we put it, I don't know why, they won't want us collectively to send it some other way. So this is what is happening here, and regardless of how it's done, this Community Service Department needs the funds to do a job, and we have so many homes throughout the community, and $500,000 would actually give the city the possibility of doing an upward of maybe 50 homes. And that is the purpose of this fund. There's nothing beyond that, simply to allocate funds for the city to do their jobs. And I know that the council with some of the committees was just feeling that because the committee suggested that we have a certain amount of funds set aside for the service department, and Councilwoman, please correct me, but they want this fund, the $500,000, to be applied toward whatever the funding was applied last month, that they voted funded, millions of dollars.
Yes.
But understand, regardless of how it's voted, whether we go with the original, original resolution or the amendment, which we now will be going and voting on the amendment, these funds will go to our Community Service Department to do what's need to be done. And the end result is to work on getting these homes down out of the communities, but not only that, once we do demolition to remove the homes, we do need to have plans to replace the homes. And that can be done, because we already have a community development plan in place. We have three catalytic areas that have been identified, that consultants came in and laid out the work for us, that we should start those areas and try to clean up those areas around that, so we can have people come back and reinvest in the communities and build new homes. That is the end result, however we get there, I just want to see us get there. And so if this is what it takes to get those funds to get these homes down, I want to see us do it. And not only that, when it comes to those things, I would ask that while we're doing this, that the Community Development Committee look at things, which I did mention this with the chairperson before, that we should look at, when we have homes that are burning down within the communities, how can we address that? What can we do legally so that when a house is burned down, that the proprietor would take an action to go ahead and remove those properties? So I would ask the committee, would they look at that? See what can we do, especially about homes that's burned down? And what can we legally do to start helping to get those some action so they won't remain there? And also, in the same token, encourage us still to continue to partner with Habitat to put new homes in the community, and continue to work with our Community Service Department so that we can enhance and build our down payment assistance programs, which will help individuals own homeownership. So for me, regardless of how, whether it's primary or amendment, I'm glad to see that the council will be putting funds toward dilapidated homes, so. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes, and after Councilwoman Barnes, we'll recognize Councilwoman Moore.
I am glad to hear the mayor say that we want, she wants us to move forward and these actions to be taken, because it is going to take all of us, and by no means is the community redevelopment saying that we are the end-all, be-all. However, however, monies have been allotted for, for this very act on last month, and so it, it really does frustrate me, because I, I question, and I know that it's over, the, the recusal is, is over, but if that is the case, half of the committees that we have, none of us could appoint these people, because all of the, all of us on a, on a regular basis appoint people who work on our campaign on committees. So my question is, where were you last month when we were voting for community? When we were voting for houses and for, for us to demolish these homes? This, if we're going to say that we are trying to get credit, it was a, a committee of council that came together and voted that this money goes into the community. That was last month, and this money goes to, to the staff to actually work on that. So now we come back a month later and say, let's, let's get money and give to staff to do what y'all already approved last month. I am not, I am not saying that we shouldn't work together. We should work together on everything that we do, and I think that everyone up here has a heart for the community. None of us want, all of us want something great to be done, but working together is not, not voting for something one month and then come back and vote trying to get everybody to vote for it the next month. That's not how you work together. That's not how you bring council together. We've got a lot of work to do, there's a lot of projects that need to be done, but we've got to work together on it, and we can't, we, we can't play these, these little things. We need to move forward. The, the committee has already started the process, we've asked for the money, it was awarded to the, the committee and staff, city staff, and so that's what we need to move forward with. Having two, two different committees or groups working on the same thing does not make sense. And so that's the reason I made the amendment to the, the motion, because we are already in the process of working for that, and we've given the money to, allotted the money for staff to work on that.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Moore.
Okay. Once we have a vote, or once we talk about things, that's when we have to come together as a council. I'm going to be very honest, we are not together as a council. Everybody wants to be heard and wants their way, and you can't always have your way. It used to be even, years and years ago, I remember trying to get some stuff to buy, or demolish, that, that- that, that property right next door to the park. I worked real hard to get that demolished. There was some property across the street from the park. I mean, it takes, it's not, it takes more than talking about, it takes actually getting out and doing. You can talk all day long, but if you're not doing anything except talking and meeting, you're not doing anything. You have to do more than talk and meet. And I enjoy, I really enjoy what I do with the puppet, because I actually talk to the people. I don't talk to the haves, but just the haves, but I also got to talk to the have-nots. It takes both to get anything done. Matter of fact, the have-nots work harder than the haves, to be honest. But that's all I wanted to say. We need to start working and start, and stop complaining and bickering with each other, because that's not helping at all. Matter of fact, I have something I came up with when I was in that room, and Randy will know about it soon. But that's all I wanted to say. We got to start working together and stop bickering, because that's exactly, may not seem like it, but that's what we're doing. We are bickering.
Any other discussion? And to close for me, the items that were discussed are two different items, and that is why the resolution was brought forth. There's no conflict and no variance upon last month's allocations of fund. They are two different items. This item was simply to direct toward an ongoing issue for the city, directed funding for a project that's already being in place. It's not a new project, it's ongoing, a project for demolition where we've been short of funds over the years. So that only effort for that resolution was to address the needs of that through fundings that was available and not identified. So let's just have that very clear. And the information, you know, I talked with, with the counsel and let him know that this was coming out. So when it comes to the other funds, those are whole different line items, just for the record. They're both different. This was not going toward a committee, this was going to a department of our city. And so the public will be clear, when it comes to subcommittees, subcommittees work at the will of the whole of the council. And any result, and when the council come forward, fund the subcommittee, subcommittees bring forth recommendations, then the whole of the council gets the vote on it. So just for the record, so we all know that. If that concludes, we have a resolution, we have a motion and a second to have the funds for the demolition, to go through with the fundings from last month's proposition, but it still will go toward $500,000 toward demolitions of homes. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the resolution as amended has passed. And that concludes our agenda. Entertainer motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.